All right, Mr. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Great. Good afternoon. This is the City of Morro Bay City Council meeting. This is a special meeting. It is Tuesday, August 24th, 2021. It's 3:30 PM. This meeting is being held via teleconference. Good afternoon and welcome to all. Pursuant to Executive Order N 08-21 issued by Governor Newsom on June 11th, 2021, this meeting will be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on Cable Channel 20 and streamed on the city website. Please be advised that pursuant to the executive order and to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus, the Veterans Hall will not be open for this meeting and probably any meetings in the near future. So, good afternoon and welcome to all, and I will ask the clerk if she can establish a quorum of council members, please.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Addis?
I'm here.
Councilmember Barton? I do see Councilmember Barton. Are you able to unmute? Councilmember Heller is with us, yes?
Here, I'm here.
You're heading?
Present. So, we do have a quorum. We'll work through hopefully the issues with our audio for Councilmember Barton and go ahead and move forward. And good afternoon. This is a special meeting of our city council today to actually receive information on our goals process from our city staff. We have established approximately four years ago a process for reviewing our goals on an annual basis and then every two years doing a re-review and a deep dive into our city goals, actually reevaluating those and either creating new goals or eliminating existing goals, et cetera. And so, this is the beginning of that process. Today, we are receiving information so far that has been collected from our community through a number of different venues that our staff will talk about, also through our business entities, through the Chamber of Commerce and other business organizations within the community, and then, of course, through private correspondence from the public as well. And so, city council members, we're taking no action today. We are providing information on process. We're not actually setting goals. We'll talk a little bit about at the end of the meeting the remainder process for that, when we will engage more significantly in actually establishing our goals for the next few years. So, I just wanted to reevaluate or, excuse me, reiterate the process that we're going through today. So, welcome to everybody, including our community members. And with that, I'll go ahead and open up a public comment. This is public comment for items on this special agenda only. This is not general public comment for any items facing the city council. Only items for, or excuse me, only public comment for items on this agenda today. And so, with that, I will go ahead and open up public comment and ask Highland, do we have anybody in the queue wanting to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not see any raised hands in the queue. Oh, I'm sorry. I have a raised hand from Erica Crawford.
Great, okay. Erica, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Council. Thank you for your attention to Goal Setting. I understand that today is a time for you to hear from your staff on their progress to date on goals set two years ago. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank your staff for their perseverance over the last 18 months. COVID hit your organization hard, just as it did the private sector. It's been great getting to know the new staff members and critical departments of the city over the last few months. It's also been heartening to interact with your staff at every level, from consolidated maintenance to planning to public works and everywhere in between, working on initiatives like the Banner Program and attending meetings with the Development Member View Team. You certainly have folks on staff who are committed to see Morro Bay thrive in 2021 and beyond. I look forward to listening in today and to building on recent momentum to get some things done that will make a measurable difference in the ability of your business community to make gain and to provide a living for their employees. As indicated in your staff report, the Chamber has done some extensive outreach to our members, and we have respectfully provided recommendations to the council to that end. Finally, many thanks to your department heads for their participation in an interactive workshop we lovingly called the Squeaky Wheel Happy Hour that we held in late July on Goal Setting. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Erica. Appreciate that input. And Highland, do we have other public comments, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do not have any more raised hands.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment for this special meeting, bring it back to council. And I will turn it over to Mr. Collins, our esteemed city manager, for your presentation. Welcome, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm going to figure out how to share my screen. It's been a little while, so bear with me. All right, can everybody see that okay?
Looks great, Scott.
Great, okay. Well, thank you so much, councilmembers, mayors, and community members watching from Zoom land and on TV. As the mayor identified, we're going to give an update on the city council goals, both from the standpoint of how we've done with the existing goals and action items and talk about the current process of review that we're going through. And then, from that point, talk about the input that we've received to date, both through online survey, through discussions with the various advisory boards, as well as the business boards that the mayor mentioned. As of now, we have four long-term goals plus one temporary goal. Council identified economic and fiscal sustainability as their primary or top priority goal a couple of years ago based upon where our financial condition was at that time. They also identified for three other goals of improving infrastructure in public spaces, completing updates to our significant land use plans, addressing affordable housing, and improving communication and community engagement. And earlier this year, council added the temporary goal of responding to the COVID-19 pandemic. Related to those goals above, there are 26 corresponding action items, which I'll discuss over the next several slides. And those are the discrete initiatives, policies, programs that we've been pursuing over the last couple of years to help achieve those goals that we identified. So, here's a quick list. It's outlined in a little more detail in the staff report, but these are items that we've already completed. I think there's about nine here. Revenue enhancement options, the Ombudsman Service Contract with the Chamber, consideration of adding vacation rentals to the Tourism Business Improvement District, a partnership policy review and implementation, adding adult-use cannabis to our retail outlets, reviewing our CalPERS and other liabilities, reviewing local labor considerations for the Wharf Project and short-term vacation rental policy revision, and completing the general plan update. All of those have been completed, and that's not to say there's other, there isn't other work to be done in these, in this area, but those discrete action items have been completed. And then, the next slide includes items that we've made some significant progress but yet to have completed. We did the majority of the update to our fees, but we still have one component left with the development impact fees. Council did adopt a new lease management policy for our waterfront, though we still have implementation items to fulfill. We continue to do outreach on opportunity sites in Morro Bay, and one of the larger opportunity sites is the power plant in the city who's engaged with Mr. Corp, who owns the majority of that site for some future opportunities there. The zoning code, now that the general plan of this program is updated, is updated and approved by council and the Coastal Commission, we're moving on to the zoning code as the implementation for that. Of course, Wharf implementation continues ongoing. The Planning Department, as well as Fire and Public Works, are involved in updating and reviewing the permitting process for development. We continue to work with our partners at the county for trying to address this very challenging issue of affordable housing. We have a parking study that we'll be sharing with several of the advisory boards in the month of September and then with city council in October. And we just took design elements to council regarding our One Water capital improvement projects. Those are water and sewer projects, not specifically related to the Wharf. We continue to make progress on those. And then offshore wind farm development, with the new administration, progress has been made on potential offshore wind development off the coast of Morro Bay, and the city is very engaged in that process. And then last, we have a slide with items that we really haven't gotten to for one reason or another. Market Street or Market Avenue Plaza redevelopment. We do have some interest there, but we haven't made a lot of progress beyond that point. The aquarium, for all intents and purposes, is not moving forward as the Central Coast Aquarium had real significant challenges just continuing operations with the COVID-19, and so, that project is, for all intents and purposes, is not moving forward. Council had some interest in high-speed internet. We haven't been able to apply much effort there, though Chamber is looking into different options. The winter shelter, there was some movement several years ago, but the county did not move forward our application for funding. There's still talk amongst the county partners about other opportunities to help our homeless or unhoused population, and those talks are ongoing. There was discussion about co-working space in Morro Bay. We have not been able to turn our attention towards that. We've always had hopes and aspirations to have a boatyard in Morro Bay, but we weren't able to engage anybody through an RP process for a feasibility study. And I believe a subset of the Harbor Advisory Board is, in the past, has looked into different grant opportunities to conduct such a study, but we have since forth not made much effort there. And then, ongoing efforts to coordinate with our nonprofit groups that do amazing work to help beautify our community. So, that's a rundown of our existing 26 action items. We have made progress despite the challenges brought upon us by the COVID-19 pandemic. With regard to the goals review process, we have received a lot of community input since we started the process in July, which I'll talk a little bit more about. And then, today is the next phase of that for council to receive the input. And then, we have a community workshop scheduled for September 29th, Wednesday, at 4:00 PM, which will be facilitated by a professional facilitator who specializes in organizational development and goals. That will be the opportunity for council to deliberate and really hone in on what they want to focus on for the next year and a half. And then, at a subsequent council meeting, you would adopt the goals and action items. And then, we would relay that information to the advisory boards in part in terms of their work plans. And we've made a commitment to provide quarterly updates as we go in terms of making sure council is up to speed with how we're progressing with regard to action items. So, now, moving into the survey results, we used our Polco online survey tool. I think we received over 100, around 120 responses. We, I spent a bit of time kind of aggregating, disaggreging that out so you had a sense of the five or six questions we asked and what the responses were. But I did a little bit more summarizing for the purposes of making this an efficient presentation. So, generally, what we heard from residents is that they're satisfied with the quality of life here in Morro Bay and typically of our services provided by the city, though certainly there's some room for improvement. Residents, by and large, love the small-town environment that's offered here, and they feel it is very important to preserve that environment. Residents identified the most important issues as follow: financial, economic, sustainability, public safety, maintaining cleanliness, and upkeep of our city infrastructure. And last but not least, residents felt the city should focus on those issues above, as well as managing impacts from tourism, also protecting the environment and getting the Wharf project done. We spoke with all five of our advisory board and commissions over the last month and a half and got really, really good input from them. By and large, they support the efforts already underway and then added some, most of them added some other items. The Planning Commission recommends that we move forward with a historic preservation ordinance that's been helped along by the Historical Society, looking at a tree bank program, moving forward to the Climate Action Plan Update, exploring finance districts, housing element implementation, and exploring business improvement districts. The Harbor Advisory Board, always looking at ways to enhance revenues, supporting the zoning code update, parking, of course, infrastructure, the Market Street Plaza project and offshore wind. They're deeply interested in all those issues. Public Works suggested we consider resiliency as we move forward, given all the challenges we face with the pandemic and with the known impacts of climate change already and those to come, that we focus on cleanliness in our community, as well as infrastructure improvements, particularly paving and stormwater. Finance, the Citizen Finance Advisory Committee, again, supporting everything we're already doing, but also looking at impact fees, cost allocation plan update, securing funding or funding plan for our infrastructure improvements, and also continuing evaluating our pension and other liabilities. And last but not least, Recreation and Parks said keep on the current course with what you're already doing. And T-Bid, the newly formed Tourism Business Improvement District, which is now is a separate nonprofit from the city. The board is still focused on cleanliness and beautification, and a lot of the tourism boards have shifted away from strictly being marketing agencies and really thinking of destiny and management and knowing they have a role to play in supporting both the economic vitality, but also the long-term sustainability of our community. Then, the Chamber of Commerce submitted a letter. So, I'll just high-level summary. The four key topics were sanitation, beautification, affordable housing or workforce housing, really, from their vantage point, traffic circulation, and infrastructure improvements. So, a lot of common themes. You can see coursing through the various inputs we've received. So, the next steps, again, is to just kind of hear the input tonight. Ask us any questions you may have. I think most of the department heads are available here to answer questions. And then, we have the Goals Workshop established for Wednesday, September 29th, at 4:00 PM. Again, that will be professionally facilitated on Zoom. Council will formally review and adopt the goals and action items following that meeting, probably sometime in October. And then, we would relay that information back to our advisory boards and commissions in terms of their work plans for the remaining months in 2021 and looking into next year, 2022. So, with that, I'll conclude my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you might may have. Thanks.
Hey, thank you, Scott, for that high-level summary of a lot of information that was contained within your staff report. Thank you for that. And all of the Polco responses from the community are not only summarized as was just presented, but all the individual comments, which I found interesting, are there in the staff report to review, along with a comprehensive letter from the Chamber of Commerce that was, I think, very helpful and outlined a number of different areas for us to consider as council for the establishment of our long-range goals. So, what I want to do now is just remind us of our process. We're not setting goals again today. We're giving feedback with regard to the presentation that was just made, information in the staff report. And then, I'll start with council questions on the information that's been presented so far with regard to either the upcoming process for the remainder of the goal-setting, and then also any specific questions you may have regarding the information contained in the staff report as outlined by Mr. Collins just a moment ago. So, first, if I could counsel just any questions you have about what was presented and/or the go-forward process. And then, I'll come back to you for any summary comments that you may have with regard to direction. Again, not specific goals, but any direction with regard to mainly process at this time. So, thanks. Hopefully, that is clear. And with that, I see Councilmember Addis's hand raised. Thank you, Councilmember Addis. You are up, please, for questions.
Thank you, Mayor. And Scott, did you say Polco is staying open through the 29th or Polco is closed now? If folks didn't have a chance to give input, can they still do that or that's over?
Yeah, we, we haven't closed the, the survey. We obviously, if there's significant swings between now and the 20, well, the staff report for the 29th of September, we would identify those, but I, we're not closing it at this point.
And then, how do folks find it? Is it just right there on Hot Topics or?
Yeah, it's on Hot Topics. The easiest thing to do is just, just search Polco, P-O-L-C-O, on Google or any other search engine, and you'll be able to log in if you already use the service. If not, you can just create a simple login and Morro Bay, you just search Morro Bay. Once you're in the tool, you get there pretty easily. So, we, we've used this tool in the past and for a variety of issues, whether it's vacation rental ordinances, city goals, the city budget, and find the input to be very helpful. And as the mayor identified, we also print the entire report. So, we always leave an open-ended questions for folks to share, comments, so that they're not, they don't feel like they're pigeonholed into answering multiple choice only. And we get a lot of really good feedback that way.
That's my only question. I'll just add, I really like Polco. I always give my opinion very, you know, for Polco, as well as participating in the meetings. But I really encourage folks to use it. It's a super easy tool. And I hope my colleagues will help me share it out as well, and a little behind on that. But I would love to get more, more responses that way. Thank you, Mayor.
Good. Thank you, Councilmember Addis. And looking for raised hands or any questions from other council members, either Councilmember Heller or Barton? Yes, Councilmember Heller, thank you, sir.
Yes, I was, I know we're not supposed to, we're just supposed to receive this, but I'm wondering if I could make a motion that we accept the recommendations made by the Recreation and Parks Commission.
So, that's pretty good. I like that.
Sorry.
Liberty is always good.
I'm sorry I had to do that. I apologize. I don't have any question. I gotta say one thing, though.
I know you read it because of that question, by the way.
So, Scott, I just gotta tell you and your staff, when I look at this list, I just go, holy cow, I can't believe all that you have gotten done with your team, and it's just remarkable. And I'm just really impressed by that list, and I've never really understood the goals process until this agenda item. So, thank you for writing that up in a way that even I can understand, so.
We're getting better at it. Thank you, Councilmember Heller.
I had to get that in there, so, really excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Appreciate that. And Councilmember Barton, did you have any questions of staff?
No particular questions. I guess my thought is that many cities would be envious of the state we find ourselves in, having, and having a big list of goals and having made significant progress on them. So, I'm, I'm very impressed with the staff as well as, as the public. So, thank you very much.
Good. Thank you for those comments. I absolutely agree with that as well. And so, I just had a couple of simple, I think, questions, Scott, for you and/or any of your staff members. How, what's the process internally for staff to gain input or insights on goals from both department heads and city staff members? Just curious about the process you're using internally for that.
We've used city, you know, surveys, we use SurveyMonkey internally. So, we get a lot of really good impact, input, I'm sorry, from, from our staff. Usually, a pretty high rate of return. Sometimes 60% or 70% will participate in surveys. So, that, that's been really helpful to give meaningful input. And again, just like with the community, we leave open-ended questions so that we can get really, really, you know, good and comprehensive feedback. And, you know, it oftentimes can be humbling to hear some of that, but it's also a good opportunity to learn where we can improve. And so, we take that feedback very seriously. And then, obviously, weekly meetings with the department head team to make sure we're, we're addressing not only what their employees' needs are, but what we're, what we're dealing with in terms of service requests from our community members. So, I think those, those are other inputs that we look into. From our vantage point, the goals, what we're hearing in the community is reflecting a lot of the things we're hearing in other ways and what our service requests are identifying. You know, obviously, the infrastructure and newly focused energy on sort of our cleanliness, trash, restrooms, and those things. It's also what we're experiencing out in the field.
Great. Appreciate that. And then, a similar question along the lines of gaining input. What do you see as the best method for obtaining input from regional organizations or county-wide organizations? Of course, a number of us serve on boards, and we'll be able to bring back that information as council members. But I know at the staff level, on a county-wide basis, I'm just wondering if there's any outreach to those folks and/or organizations or departments for input on Morro Bay's goals?
Yes, great, great question. And you all serve us well as representatives on the various boards, whether it's Locog or IWAA and the like, and the homeless efforts. So, we really appreciate council members stepping into that. We, I have monthly meetings with the other city managers and the county CAO. And some of the other cities have already gone through and adopted their goals. And so, it's always good to sort of check and see what they're experiencing. And there's a variety, of course, across the county, but there's a lot of commonality. We've tried over the last several years to work towards regionalism where it makes sense. We're, we're going to divert in some areas, but it is worthwhile doing that and participating in those groups. I certainly encourage council members to share what they're hearing on the various boards they're serving on. And we know we have some big initiatives, including the one with IWAA and around Senate Bill 1383 that will have significant workload impacts for, for your staff and also for you as policymakers. So, those are, that's just one example of many that comes up through our county participation.
Great. Appreciate that. I think that's important to get that, that feedback from county staff members and departments as well as information that we bring from our organizations that we are connected with at county level. Again, I don't have any further questions. I'll just maybe start with some summary comments. I'll also add to my thanks to you, Scott, and your staff for a comprehensive overview of our process. I think we have a very stellar process that we revised a number of years ago. That's very inclusive and allows us to really spend a lot of time analyzing where we're headed as a community and as a city, and using a very solid methodology to design and reformulate our goals more in-depth over the two years and then review those on an annual basis. One of the concerns I've always had is what I would call statistical significance. And it's always hard, in my opinion, for cities to get to a level of statistical significance where you're getting input from a large number of community members, especially with the challenges of COVID right now and having to use Zoom to call in and make public comments. But I agree with Councilmember Addis that Polco is an excellent avenue to give input. I especially like reading the comments, the open-ended comments that folks make. They're very informative. And I guess I'm not saddened, but always wondering how, you know, we can improve our response rate. 120 responses from a community of 10,700 people, obviously, is not statistically significant. Not pointing fingers at the staff members or our process at all, Scott, but just encouraging us to try to find ways to get the message out, challenge the council members to use your constituents and your connections to encourage people to give input. The more, the better. We need, we need the folks that own this asset to participate in the planning of the future for this asset that is our city. And so, however that possibly could be increased in terms of number of comments or inputs that we get, I would encourage us to do that. And then, you know, we have, we have a public comment methodologies or opportunities. And again, unfortunately, we receive very few public comments. Perhaps more when we get into the September 29th meeting. But I would encourage us as council- But I would encourage us as council members and as a city to reach out to our constituents and encourage them, even assist them on logging in to Zoom and providing input during our meetings. This is just so critically important for the city to hear the voice of our community and to hear a diverse voice of individuals. You know, we're not significantly diverse, so to speak, as a community, but we have diversity. And to hear all voices, or as many voices, from as many different constituents is so critical these days. And so I just encourage us to do that. I wanted to also thank staff for reaching out to the advisory boards and all the commissions. I appreciate their input and the time that staff took to do that. That's critical, to have public comment there and then input from each of the advisory boards and entities that we serve. And then thanks, Scott, for outlining what you're doing with city staff. City staff is so knowledgeable and insightful, and the more we can get their participation in assisting us with their thoughts about where we should be headed as a city, I would just encourage that. Councilmembers, I'll challenge you in two or three ways. One, for the regional organizations that you're involved with, I would specifically ask that you would entertain making a list of the important items that might affect Morro Bay that should be considered by us in the upcoming planning process. A number of us obviously represent very important broad organizations that now are involved in initiatives that are going to impact the city of Morro Bay. And so I would encourage you to start collecting that information and be ready to bring that back, beginning on September 9th, when we have our input sessions for that. And then, councilmembers, you also have your own outreach to a number of constituents that you serve or your constituency groups. And I would just ask that you, either through social media, direct phone calls, Zoom meetings, or what have you, take it upon yourselves to have a couple of meetings that are especially used to invite your constituents to give input directly to you as a council member so that you can bring that broader voice back to us as a city. I just think that's so important. We used to be able to gather and get 200 or 300 people in a room. That's just not possible with COVID right now. And that's unfortunate, but I do think there are other ways to go about that and do that. And so the bottom line of what I'm trying to do is encourage all of us to be involved in getting as much input through outreach to our community as possible to get a higher level of participation, a more broadly diverse group of individuals with participation in the formulation of goals for the future because we're on the cusp of some really great and interesting things that are moving forward in our city. And now's the time to really engage as many people as possible for that. So I just beat that to death, I know, but I just think it's so critical to challenge each other, to gain that outreach opportunity and get as much input as possible. Scott, again, thank you and your staff for all the work we've done so far and with the information you've provided us. I wanted to say special thanks to the chamber, who independently went out and assessed the city's historical performance with our existing goals and came up with a very comprehensive list of recommendations. I so appreciate that. And I want to just thank Erica Crawford and Tim Callan and the Chamber Board and their GAC Committee for all the work they did to present that document. And I look forward to their further input. However, I think there are a number of other community organization voices that we're missing. And Scott, I think it would be helpful to reach out to organizations like the Historical Society, the Library, the Master Leaseholders Group, and I could go on and on. But there are just a number of smaller entities that are out there that have a voice that I think are important. You know, National Estuary Program, our not-for-profits, there's a whole list. But whatever we can do to specially contact them and ask for their input, either through Polco or through a process that, similar to what the Chamber went through, I would encourage us to do that because I know there are significant voices there to be heard. So with that, I'll stop and say thank you again. Remind the community that we need you here on September 29th at 4:00 PM. That is the community workshop goal-setting. That's the time where we will actually begin to outline the goals for the future, give our recommendations as council after hearing your input as a city and formulating the new goals and objectives and work plan for the city for the next few years. And so with that, I will stop and turn it over to Councilmember Addis, who has her hand up. Thank you, Councilmember Addis.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one more question, Scott. Does Polco have a QR code, do you know? And you may not have that information right now, but.
I don't, I'm not sure if they do or not. I just have a quick link that I could share with everybody to send out via email. But again, the easiest thing to do is just Google Polco, Morro Bay, and it'll take you where you need to go. If you've never used the service, it takes about 10 seconds to sign up for it. The reason why the sign-up is required is it eliminates the opportunity for folks to duplicate or triplicate or more of their vote. So it gets closer to a statistical significant survey result. But it's all unanimous. It's all anonymous, so we don't know who's saying what to the city.
Right. Got it. I was just thinking that if there is a QR code, that's an opportunity to ask businesses just to put that QR code out, you know, just print it off and put it out on their counters. Or maybe that is something the Chamber might be able to... I know the Chamber is probably sending it out in their emails, and I very much appreciate that. But anyway, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Addis. Any other councilmember comments? Okay, hearing none. Again, thanks, Scott, and staff. Thank you, councilmembers, for your work on this. And we will be meeting on this again September 29th, 4:00 PM. Community workshop, it will be via Zoom, most likely, because of the pandemic. And again, Polco is open and will be open and remain open for your continued input. We thank you for that as a community. With that, if there's nothing else, I'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. The next meeting of the City of Morro Bay City Council will be a regular meeting at 5:30 this evening. It's 4:07 PM, and we will see you in a little less than an hour and a half. Thank you and have a great afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. Thank you.